Good evening, welcome to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, five thirty P M. We need council members to stand and join in this. I put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two, approval of this from April first.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Item number three, is there any public concerns? You have anyone? Item number four, sports judges report.
Council has received all of the financial data, bank statements and et cetera for the month ended March thirty-first. I don't really have anything to add to that other than today is April fifteenth, which is normally a huge day in the finance office, or at least it used to be, the clerk's office, it used to be before we switched over to Rita. Since that switch, May ends up being the big revenue month versus April, so maybe we'll have more to talk about a month from now.
I'll move to approve.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Item number five is an ordinance, John, please number read.
Ordinance number thirteen, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan with a fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four and declaring an emergency. There are four items in this amended appropriation request. The first one is ten thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, that's to appropriate or reappropriate money that we received, insurance reimbursement for an accident that occurred with one of our police vehicles. And then the next three items were donations. There's a twenty thousand dollar anonymous donation coming in for the Lincoln Park project. The Bryan Development Fund has provided three thousand dollars for flowers in the downtown flowerpots. And then another twelve hundred and fifty dollars that has come in for the amphitheater. This ordinance would authorize the expenditure of those funds.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
So that was a motion to suspend, actually.
All right. I'm motion to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Item number six is an ordinance, John, please number read.
Ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance to amend Title V of the city of Bryan's codified ordinances to add Chapter three forty-three concerning the operation of golf carts and underspeed vehicles on city streets.
So council, we were asked by both public and at least one council member to look into a golf cart ordinance to review. Again, I'm just asking for a first reading. Mark Fischel is here too, so if you have any legal questions, please direct those to our city attorney. But this is basically the draft that we as department and administration came up with. There are some questions we have, you know, we have no person shall operate the underspeed vehicle upon any street or highway in the city with an established speed limit greater than thirty-five. So just make note that doesn't land lock some of the golf cart use, but we also have to be very clear with some of the thirty-five mile an hour areas, especially Main and High, that we keep golf carts off of those. You also cannot cross a thirty-five mile an hour street unless you are at an activated signal, not just a stop sign. They have to be legally registered through the state of Ohio, they have to have seat belts, they have to have proof of insurance, audible horns, basically anything that the state requires, headlights, taillights, brake lights, turn signals, et cetera. And those will be inspected annually by the police department, at which point they will get a sticker that they can renew. Believe that date we put in was February twenty-eighth of each year. There is a fifty dollar cost affixed to that annual inspection fee that would need to be scheduled at the police department, so they would have to call dispatch for an appointment. Again, all, if you do choose to do this, all utility vehicles and underspeed vehicles cannot operate upon sidewalks, bike trails, walking paths, or any grass surface within the city limits. Did I miss anything?
When you were talking about the areas where they could be operated, did you say in areas where the speed limit goes greater than thirty-five or twenty?
Twenty-five.
Basically, they can be on higher Main.
Right. But they also, that will take out Center Street too, that will take out a few other streets. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and we can talk through that. But again, there is, there is really not a reason that we should allow them on Main and High with the semi-traffic that we have. I think that will be a major safety concern.
What about like truck routes? Because I know that there's some truck routes that...
Yeah, like Wilson too can be an issue, I would think.
Yeah, I agree with Wilson.
And Center Street, because there's, I mean, there's semis down there a lot.
Well, you got Mulberry Street with...
That's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something to look at.
Yeah.
And then my other question is, because you know, you can't, you can't cross a thirty-five unless they're a trafficway. So like if you're on, trying to think, Portland Street, and you want to cross over Center Street...
You can, there's a light there.
Yeah, I'm trying, I think you're in intersection.
But like Markey, you wouldn't be able to.
Right, okay, Markey, you'd be able to cross over.
Yeah, you, you can't cross it, cross there. You would have to, if you, you'd have to go down Portland, Ryan, we talked about this, didn't we? We'd have to go down Portland, all the way down to maybe Oakwood Avenue?
And sneak back, yeah.
And then go back that way. So you would cross Center at the light and then hang left.
So the idea that I would have a straight path from point A to point B?
Probably not.
Is not a reality.
Right.
I do have another question, because one of the things I was interested in is the inspection by the police department. What's, what's going to be the impact on them? I mean, I could just say that they've got to schedule an appointment and so forth, but I mean, question is, is we don't even know how many vehicles this might end up being, and so I was kind of wondering what would the impact be on the police department and our officers?
Yeah.
How much time is this going to consume?
I'm going to defer that actually to Captain Mendez, sorry chief. He talked to five other departments and got some of their inspection paperwork, so he kind of gets the...
So, the impact, we don't know, because we don't know how many people are going to ask for this, but what we envision it is, if you need to have your golf cart inspected, you would call us to make an appointment, because especially with us being short-staffed, us going to your house, checking if we might have to leave. We don't want people coming to our place and then we just can't help them out. There is a list that's required by the state to go through this inspection and we have to sign off on it, so that way the state can say, yes, we can license your vehicle. So it is a requirement. But in general, we don't know how many people are going to be doing this. We don't, I can tell you with Napoleon, when I was with them, it wasn't very many. That was, was under, maybe under ten at the time.
So envisioning a community in Florida with lots of these golf carts going around is not, is excessive?
I would not.
In my, for me to be looking, thinking that way?
Yeah, I don't foresee that.
Okay.
So a lot of it too is, they're only going to operate four or five months out of the year based on weather unless they've got a covered, heated kind of golf cart.
So I know last year, we were having an issue with the electric bikes. You know, they were riding on Union and so on and so forth. You know, is there a way that we can encompass that into this ordinance? You know, to, you know...
Yeah, we had really talked about that, but there's just so many unique things with the motorized scooters that we thought maybe it needed to be a separate.
Okay. Okay. Which the mayor's been working on that for some time now. We've been meeting to try to come up with a good law governing that. But I do have, or the SROs in the school are going to start a campaign before school's out to kind of explain the rules, the importance of staying off the roadways and helmets and that such.
And stopping at intersections, because a lot of the kids are not stopping at stop signs.
Well, I mean, this wasn't just about kids though, this was older adults.
Yeah, no, I, I know.
Who were riding around without anything.
Yeah.
No turn signals, brake lights.
Or stoplights, stop signs.
So we've kind of got a two-fold issue, because we've got them on the road, but we also, I think they're legally allowed to be on the road, based on revised code. And then we've got them on the walkpaths and the sidewalks and they're just, we've got to figure out where the state goes and what we can do to flex that.
So if I have an electric bicycle, I have an awful lot more, or even a three-wheeled electric bicycle, I have a lot more latitude than I do if I have a golf cart.
Today, yeah.
And that's per Ohio, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the city has never allowed golf carts. The golf carts are legal in the state of Ohio, you can get them licensed. We had, do have a few people that actually have a handicap situation where they do drive their golf cart and they're allowed through their medical doctor, but otherwise, golf carts have been prohibited in the city for, for always, even though, so some of this we coupled state law that was already existing in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If I can just add, I think, again, so I know Mr. Betts has had some questions...
I do.
...that he emailed, and one of them, one of them was, what is the definition? Because the, the draft ordinance refers to the Ohio Revised Code, and so one of the, one of the questions is, what's the definition of a low-speed vehicle? And a low-speed vehicle means a three- or four-wheeled motor vehicle with an attainable speed in, with an attainable speed in one mile on a paved level surface of more than twenty miles an hour, but not more than twenty-five, and then doesn't weigh more than three thousand pounds. So a three-wheeled electric bike could fall under state regulations, but the two-wheel definitely does not, like the e-bikes.
And the other thing is, like, a big quad is not going to fit under that with the weight and speed.
When you say quad, you're talking the off-road vehicle type ones? Okay, sorry, my...
My turn? I mean, is that what I was done was my question?
Yeah, I just wanted to, because the three-wheel came up.
And that was helpful, because that was my second question. My, my first one's a little, little, starting with the basics, which is, I heard last time that, that pros and cons of this issue that were discussed apparently ten, fifteen years ago. Heard the con, and it's been addressed in terms of location. We can't have them crossing Main and High, et cetera. So that was kind of the con. I haven't heard the pro. What, how is this going to better? And that's real, I'm just looking around. I've heard it's like six or ten folks have kind of come forward with this. I'm not against it, I just haven't heard the, the pro. So the value of, of Bryan going ahead with this ordinance is, so I'm filling the blank.
Mr. Colson Black, do you want to talk about that, or?
I, I've had more than six people come up to me. You know, this has been talked about for a long time. I think the pro is just being able to get on a golf cart and go to the park, or it's just a, what's that?
Save gas.
Oh, save gas. It's good for the elderly. If they don't have good transportation, they can take the golf cart. Obviously, they can't take the golf cart to Walmart or Chief or whatever, you know, but they can go other places, I guess, at this point. I, I don't know, I, I just think it's a good idea.
Can they go, oh, I'm not even, I'm not even close to that yet. I'm trying to understand. So, some of the pros that you've heard is, I'm not against this. I, I start with a blank slate and go forward. I have nothing going on here except information gathering. So some of the pros that you heard from folks was that for the elderly, it would help them to get from point A to point B. Some of that though is the park. Isn't the park, as long as you're on the asphalt thing, that's okay, right?
Yeah, you have to stay on the street.
So you have to, as long as, so as long as you can stay on the street. And then, were the people that were in favor of this aware? We need to kind of hear from them with these parameters now, is that going to be a significant difference to them, right? If, if I'm seventy-two, woo, I am, and I want, I have a golf cart and I want to be able to take it to be able to do A, B, C, and D, and I find out the ordinance is, doesn't allow A, doesn't allow P, and doesn't allow D, but just C, I'm not sure how enthused I am about going forward with that.
Sure.
So, so that, that would be a question that would be helpful if people could come forward and say, after reading this, this is still going to help me in this manner, in this way. That, that would help me a lot to understand the value of proceeding, because I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just not sure I understand that. So that would be my first question is, is just, how is this going to help those people that were interested in seeing this? And then of course, once you hear that, then I'm not real sure, since the parameters, which were done very well, by the way, I think those parameters are fairly decent to protect what I heard were the cons in the past, so I think that was done very well. The second question I had had to do with the definitions, and that was very helpful, Mark, because I had no plan on reading all of three forty-three point oh-one, Ohio Revised Code, had no interest in that for this issue. This is not what I call a hot button issue with me. So that was helpful, because it, it kind of brought up the issue to me of, what is that definition of an underspeed vehicle? I assume a golf cart, an ATV, because it would be three or four wheeled, or is that going to go over?
So if they go over the thirty-five, which most do...
They go over thirty-five, so you couldn't have, the ATV would likely be out, right?
In all likelihood, as I understand, the technology, yes.
Yeah, because that's why I asked about the quad, to make sure I was on the same...
Based on weight, probably, that'll get ruled out.
Yeah, with the weight due, but also...
Because it was three thousand pounds or back?
Three hundred.
Yeah. So, yeah, that, no, that's very helpful. Gators would be, I would think, somewhat similar in terms of poundage and probably speed, I would think. I'm trying to think, and then I also had down, what about electric, go-karts and electric bikes? I mean, would go, not that a seventy, not that I would get on a go-kart, let's make that very clear, but I just want to make sure what we're opening up here, so...
Right, I, I would say, electric bikes definitely need to have a different definition in that, this, this would not allow or prohibit electric bikes. That is an issue that maybe needs to be looked at, either in conjunction with this ordinance or separate, and I think there was some talk that that is being, you know, considered along with scooters as well. Go-karts, I have a hard time envisioning go-karts falling into this parameter, because it still needs to get up between twenty and twenty-five miles an hour and needs to have all the other safety features that a, that a, a licensed vehicle could have on the road. And I've, in my experience, in my doing work with other cities, I've never seen go-karts be, contemplated as qualifying under this kind of ordinance.
Would it be, sorry, chiefs, would it be safe to assume that a go-kart wouldn't pass inspection based upon the criteria that you would have to have, the lights and the turn and the variety of other things that are mentioned here? I mean, I've never seen that fancy of a go-kart.
Again, they go over twenty-five miles an hour though.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, sorry, when I think of a go-kart, I'm thinking a couple pieces of metal with, you know, riding more wheels on it and a, and a lawnmower engine on the back of it, you know, that's, that's my definition of a go-kart.
You know Sam Hornish Jr. was born in Bryan, Ohio and started on go-karts, and it was fancier than that.
Yeah.
Just for your trivia for today.
Thanks.
I'm guessing those went over twenty-five miles.
They did.
And the, the final comment that I had, and it's certainly not, we don't need to discuss it here, but I'd be willing to discuss whoever's looking at the ordinance. I'm not sure I agree with how three forty-three point oh-two, E, F, G, and H are all separate. It seems as though those can be combined and be more clear and concise. That's a technical writing issue that does not need discussion, but since you were here, Mark, I thought I'd bring that up, because I presume you are going to be the author or writer of this, so...
I, I, no, I'm glad you brought that up.
Actually, I think F and G might be duplicates.
Oh, okay.
They're real close.
Yeah.
Seems somewhat redundant, but...
I will revisit that, absolutely.
I appreciate that. And that is the end of my take.
Well, F and G, one is about the operator and the other one's about the passenger.
Yeah.
Right.
And there can be, my point is, is that, that...
You could put operator or passenger.
My point is, that can be, that, I could put that into a sentence that could combine.
Right.
But I don't want to presume anything on a legal basis either.
And, and just so you know, and again, I will certainly revisit it, absolutely. One of the reasons they are separate is to make it abundantly clear, and it doesn't mean they can't be combined, but, but again, I will, I will go back and look at, look at it.
Yeah, I don't want to lose, if you, and I will bow to that, by the way. If you believe it's more clear to keep them separate, that's fine, it just seems somewhat, in some cases redundant, in other cases, it would flow better with the seatbelt scenario, but I...
Understood.
Call me if you have any further thoughts. That's, that's all I have, that's the comments I have. Thank you.
So from, just my takeaway right now, Ryan and Andy, could you work with Mark on truck route, et cetera, and maybe, does anyone want to open up the possibility to some streets that are thirty-five, or are you good with the twenty-five?
See, and there's some neighborhoods that are going to get ruled out here, like Deerfield Circle.
Right.
Close, you know, out that area, because that's a thirty-five mile an hour street to get to the city. So, you know, the original intent, I think, was to keep the golf carts in the neighborhoods, and this kind of does it, but it's just a small neighborhood out there in those two. So, you know, if somebody feels those areas need access to town, we're going to have to consider some other option there, possibly.
Right. The other thing I want to make a point, though, we have always allowed agricultural use with the gators, the ATVs. So when you see, I'm just going to call on, pick on ferals, like in the snow plowing, like we consider that agricultural use and they are allowed to travel throughout the city to get to the areas they're contracted to do for sidewalks and parking lots. So that won't change, that's always been allowed. Same thing with the chamber, we put a special event type thing, groups authorized by the mayor, operating, because obviously they have Jubilee Day in the park out there, so there are some times that they're, they use golf carts and we didn't want to impact that.
Yeah, I guess...
Have you guys considered what the rest of South has though?
Well, that's, that's, I wanted a little more discussion on that.
Yeah, like all of Wilson and the majority of South Street.
Yeah.
But Mulberry's pretty wide.
Greystone would be stuck too, in that neighborhood.
Right, because they can't get out town line or side.
They could cross at the school, but they can't get out of the school anywhere else because Papa Grove is also thirty-five mile an hour. So you're going to have a lot of neighborhoods that are just restricted to their neighborhoods.
Or they do it and it starts to force them around the barricade at Barrister, and then that becomes another issue.
For sure. And the other, oh, sorry.
Well, no, that was my, that was my point, that was the point I was trying to get at, that it's one thing for people to initially say, gee, I think we ought to have golf cart availability, the city of Bryan. It's another thing, once we set a, the parameters of an ordinance, do they still want that? That, that would be something that, and the reason I'm doing this, obviously publicly, is because I'm asking for those ten, twenty, three thousand people, whatever, to, to come and say, you know, if you're going to do it this way, I don't even know if I'm going to be able, how am I going to navigate this? I'm going to need a GPS to know I can go here, then I have to go here, and I got to go here. They may not even want that. And so I would like, that's the biggest point, I'd like to hear from that, from folks, as to what, read over the proposed ordinance and see if it still has value for you to go forward, because quite frankly, right now, it's not a huge deal for me one way or the other.
Ryan, what about folks in Union Place? They'd have the same issue, they wouldn't be able to get out.
Correct.
Yeah, and even, where Mr. Hoopy lives, that would be difficult, because you can't get on Center Street even, I mean...
Yeah, he couldn't leave the driveway.
Couldn't leave the driveway.
Yeah, so...
That's one thing that I'm sitting here thinking, is limit to twenty-five miles an hour, we're kind of taking the whole thing out of the street.
Yeah.
And, and that's where we struggled here, like, so we just threw twenty-five in there because we just wanted to make sure you guys all knew. Safety-wise, there's some areas that we probably shouldn't have golf carts, and, you know, now truck routes, even though some of those are twenty-five, we may have to rethink that too. And then the other part is, like, we struggled with, are we restricting this so much that all we're going to do is push a whole bunch of headaches onto law enforcement? Because we don't want to do that either, right?
And that's one thing that I think you would see is, I can't legally do this, but if I quit to drive down here and just get to this next street, and you'll see, you'll have people breaking the law because they just want to get from point A to point B without driving a half a mile out of the way.
I can drive around this, or I can cut through that, and I think then we're opening again for our law officers, another, another issue, another headache in that regards.
But we do need to be really clear, though, on the grass in the park, like, we cannot have that.
No.
It, it gets really soggy out there. Any of you that have worked for Day in the Park know that when it rains in that area, and, yeah, and, and people may not see it coming, because it's a little bit sunken, and our parks department has been pretty adamant, even though it sounds like a fun idea, especially for the amphitheater concerts, like pulling up into the grass is going to really ruin our park.
Yeah.
So that's the thing to consider. Do you want us to kind of investigate the map again on the thirty-five in some areas and articulate that out, or?
Could we?
Yeah.
Please?
I have a...
Yeah.
Take it.
Okay.
I think it was a good first reading. I've got some ideas out and...
Okay, are we down with the first team?
I think so.
Up next is number seven, ordinance, John, please number read.
Ordinance number fifteen, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Griffin Pavement Straping L L C for the project known as twenty twenty-four Pavement Marking Program.
Good evening, we received bids last week. We only received one loan bid, but it was probably fifteen, twenty thousand, under my engineer's estimate. They've done workforce in the past, we're at one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. It's a little higher than last year, because we're going to re-stripe Main Street, North and South. It's been a while since we've done that, so I would request you suspend the rules and authorize me to proceed with this.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to...
We got a gentleman holding up his hand.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Landman, we're in the middle of motioning, so we need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is your call, public concerns are over now.
We have public concerns, sir. Sir, we have public concerns, but if you want to talk real quick, we can go ahead and have you talk the whole, yes.
Should I stand up?
Yep.
You need to come up here, Mr. Landman.
Okay. I just wrote about this in the paper, it's kind of a surprise.
I'll need you to stay here, babe.
My name is Paul Landman, I've lived here forty years, started, worked at General Tire for the forty years. Anyway, I'm eighty-two years old, and I really can't see any positive things coming out of this golf cart. I just, I just think it's, it's risky. Lynn Street, I backed into somebody on Lynn Street a few years ago, Lynn Street West there is just dangerous, even just pulling in and pulling out, and I, these vehicles[1772.65] And I, these vehicles, like, these vehicles that you're looking at, I mean, they're small vehicles. People are not gonna be able to see very well all the time. And these vehicles, you may have a restriction on the street, but boy, when you've got these trucks pulling through here, these long trucks going at 30 miles an hour through downtown, and we're gonna have these little carts around in parking areas, people backing up into them. I just, I just don't see a, a small town, I don't see a need for it. I think you, you have a good system now. I think that the streets are somewhat narrow downtown. But I just don't see any benefit from this, this, this program. I mean, what, this is not an amusement park here. This is a street, streets of the city. And we don't need to compromise safety, which I think would be, this is, to me, is a big safety compromise. I just, I just don't see, I don't see any need for it. I mean, somebody might think it's a good thing, or it's fun, you know, you can, um, if you, um, as I was saying, I'm 82, I'm not the best driver around, but that's an issue. On the other side is that older people, maybe they can get to the shopping areas in a cart, but then what about the older people driving those carts? And so, anyway, I, I was kinda surprised when I read about it in the paper. And, um, I just think it's the wrong direction from a safety standpoint. And we just got a small town here. People can basically walk to downtown, a lot of people can. But I think it's, to me, it's, it's a risk, uh, as far as the safety aspects. And I kinda go along with the comments John made there. Um, I, I don't know how far you've pushed this program. I mean, if it's, it's almost ready to be adopted, or you're gonna have a lot of discussion.
We have two more readings. We haven't finalized anything yet. We've got two more meetings yet.
Okay, so anyway.
We're gonna open it up and figure out what the community wants as well.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to come to the meeting, and I read about it, and I thought, gee, I don't know if I like that idea, but it's up to the citizens to vote it in, I think. And I think there should be a lot of discussion about the safety. Because if the first person gets hurt, then we're gonna, you know, somebody's gonna back into somebody going along the parking area there over by, behind, um, Seasons, or somebody driving through there with a little cart. Anyway, I, that's, that's kinda what I wanted to state, state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, item number eight. Is there a resolution? John, will you please number eight?
Resolution number 20, 2024, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2024.
Good evening.
Evening.
This is the annual resolution that allows us to participate in the ODOT salt purchasing program.
I'll move to suspend.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number nine is a resolution. John, please number eight.
Resolution number 21, 2024, a resolution authorizing the police chief for the city of Bryan to apply for grants for the city of Bryan Police Department.
Evening, counsel.
Evening.
Just looking for permission to apply once again for the Walmart Community Grant, the National Police Dog Foundation Grant, the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Program, and National Rifle Association Law Enforcement Range Fund.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is a status change. Oops, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We still have a number, um, permission to test. Sorry about that.
Go ahead, chief.
Oh, I didn't know if you needed to read it. Okay, so we are asking for permission to, um, to give a civil service test for a physician to full-time police fire dispatcher for the city of Bryan due to the retirement coming of Dana Andrews. The last civil service examination was concluded December 15th of last year. We were able to hire one full-time dispatcher from that list, but it has since been exhausted of qualified applicants.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. And yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Item number 11 is a status change.
Good evening. John Leonard has completed his one-year probation as the clerk treasurer. He is an exceptional member of our management team, and he displays outstanding leadership skills and has brought a wealth of knowledge and experience to the role. John is highly respected by staff and peers. So we respectfully request to have John removed from his probationary status effective May 1st.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
You find it hard to make such a recommendation on your boss?
Do you know I, I helped her write that, so that it wasn't uncomfortable?
I understand. I'm wondering, and, and that was meant to be funny.
I took that.
In the future, I'm wondering if there's a different avenue. Give it some thought, let me know if there's a different avenue, because I don't wanna put an employee in a conflict. My boss is outstanding, you know, of, of course, they are.
Tricia, we can agree that I, I did add those things and just said, could you prepare the paperwork as HR, so.
This came from the mayor.
So really, if it would have been a bad review, he still would have had to come to me.
Yeah.
Right?
So, yeah, so it's.
Yeah, I get it.
It's just, yeah. Seems like it's uncomfortable for an employee to be in that position. The answer I have is absolutely, yes.
And Mary?
Sorry to interrupt that, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you very much.
Do you find it awkward to take minutes about your own probationary status?
I'm funny.
All right, that concludes the agenda. Um, we'll go down to the room, Mary. Do we have?
Um, I do want to make sure you are all aware Governor Dewine is coming to Bryan Friday, and there will be a 45-minute to one-hour ceremony at the Arts and Ed, starting at 1:00 PM to commemorate Williams County bicentennial. Um, for any of you that were paying attention during the pandemic, we actually tried that celebration. And, um, so what we found was, I believe, the first commissioners' meeting happened April 19th, 200 years ago. So we are redoing that, um, and I will be giving a proclamation on behalf of the city. There are some program speakers. You are all welcome to join. If you are coming, please let me know. Um, as elected officials, um, they will put you in the front row of the Arts and Ed, but we need to kinda know by probably Wednesday. Um, I think, I think that might be it. Obviously, uh, parks are busy with, with spring sports, and, um, engineering is starting to work on all their projects, and police, police and fire are always busy. Wastewater, you're still working on your project with Arcadis Streets. Obviously, we're gonna get 800 tons of salt tomorrow, right?
I don't think we'll get it tomorrow.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna scan it in and, and fill out the proper paperwork, because I will never forgive myself for that here. But, um, I also just wanna briefly talk about Mr. Leonard. Um, he has been a great asset to our team. Um, his demeanor is always appropriate, even when he has to tell us the bad news of no. Um, but he's very smart. He is very quick to get back to us on things and is a huge collaborator in the city. And I think I speak for all the department heads that we just appreciate him being here in the city of Bryan, working with us every day. Thank you.
John, do you have anything to say?
Uh, you know, thank you, of course, um, and just that it's unbelievable that it's been a year. Thank you.
Thank you. The park ahead, if anyone, newspaper?
He didn't even hear you. Mr. Fishel?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you meant counseling.
SEO.
To jump on the bandwagon, I got the privilege of working with John and a couple jobs ago in defiance, and I'm glad I get to still work with him here in, uh, in Bryan. He does a great job, and he's always found on the, on the legal side of things.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John.
With that, I need a motion to go into executive session, discuss amendment and heavy litigation.
So, or second.
Okay, John, Steve.
John?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?